Okay. Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Soiues Town Council, Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2019, at 9:00 AM in council chambers. And I'd first of all like to introduce to you all our new CAO, Alan Chabot, who is here with us today. Welcome, Alan. And you have a large crowd to listen to you today, so that's even better.
That's right.
That's absolutely. So, I don't believe there's any late items. Mrs. Henson, thank you. So could we please have a motion to let the agenda be adopted? Counselor Rhodes, Counselor Bennett, thank you, all in favor. Thanks. And delegations. Our first delegation today is from delegation of one. Our MLA, Linda Larson, would like to, would you please come up to the podium and welcome, MLA Larson?
And welcome to here. I just wanted to more get an update from you as well on the accommodation that was set up part industry, and I know the town did services, that was meant for people that were coming here to work for the summer months. I know originally, the plan was that it would be such that in the winter, it could possibly be for snowbirds. And I remember, a number of years ago, Counselor Youngberg, coming forward with an idea about the town itself, getting involved somehow in providing some accommodation, housing that some could be at Current Market, other and other in the same building, for instance, could be at the lower end, and hopefully encouraging a developer or somebody to do that. I had a meeting with the delegation of some of the pub owners and so on, and they did not appear to be very happy with the accommodation that did end up being built, or the Atco trailers or whatever, that apparently it was not as pleasant inside as it should be, or they thought it should be, and still not enough. And I think the bottom line is still not enough. So I just wondered if you had had any feedback on that Atco trailer accommodation, how that was working out? Because I haven't heard from the hotels themselves, just from the pubs and restaurants and those places. So I would, I'd like to know whether you've heard any, had any feedback on that. And also, if you are going to get meetings at the UBCM, and you do meet with the Housing Minister, whether or not you'd be interested in looking into something beyond those Atco trailers?
So that's, there's a lot of questions and so on in there.
Yes.
The, as, I'm glad Ms. McKay's here, because my understanding is that the trailers that were brought in were, yes, the town provided some services, but they were brought in by three of the accommodators. Could you comment on that, please, Ms. McKay, if you probably know better than I do?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Yes, I was here.
Okay.
That is correct, Mayor McCordough. Those trailers in that particular project was funded in large part by the hotels that contributed to it. So it was intended to provide, first off, accommodation for those hotels that actually funded the project. So it wasn't necessarily done to provide for additional accommodation for other people that come to work in the tourism industry and that sector in our community. I think it has been a fairly successful project. In a recent meeting with Glenn Harris from the Watermark, he indicated it has been successful, although they could fill it twice again. So yes, we are going to be looking at opportunities for housing projects in our community, and definitely as part of our Housing Needs Report, which will feed into our Fish Community Plan, will provide another opportunity for a higher level of input into housing needs in our community and possible solutions to address those needs.
Thank you.
So I do know that, well, Spirit Ridge, they have rented, or they've arranged for it to be rented, the Tamri Motel, which is down on Motel Road. There are 10 units there. Those are leased out to people who are working at Spirit Ridge. Somebody who works there, their cousin owned it, so they said, would you be interested? They were. So I think that it's really good that people are trying to find solutions. I've certainly seen a lot of ads on, in the loop, and on, of people who've decided that maybe their basement suite could be fixed up a little bit and rented out. I know there are several restaurants and businesses who have either purchased a motel unit and rented out, or they've purchased a condo. One has purchased a house, and I believe there's room for four people to be in there. So businesses are looking at how they can provide accommodation for their workers, and that needs to be part of the solution, for sure. So we do have a piece of property near the Palms, which was given to us. It's quite a complicated issue, because we've had to go through, you know, lawyers and looking at how it all works, and Part II and Part III. We're in the process of doing that. And BC Housing has been quite interested in talking to us. I know they've talked to the former CAO, Barry Romanco, and Ms. McKay about this, and I can see that that is probably something that is going to be looked at. We really don't know till we do this, the OCP review and the housing, whether we should put in condos there, or...
Some rental.
Yeah, or rental. Do you want to comment on that?
Thank you again, Mayor McCordough. And one other additional item, we do anticipate applications coming forward for the second phase in Metalark, and those members of our community that were here when the Metalark plan was developed will recall that that included an opportunity for multiple forms of housing in that area, and we will be bringing additional market rental housing online with that second phase. So we can anticipate an application for that coming forward in within the next month or two.
And the other one is around Peanut Pond. That is...
That's correct. That's, we anticipate a development permit proposal coming forward for that and looking for council's approval for that development permit. That includes 54 for sale units and up to 19 rental units. So there are, it's a multifaceted challenge in our community, and it needs to have several different solutions, so we're looking at those.
I fully understand large industry like Spirit Ridge and Walnut Beach and the rest of them, you know, stepping up, and I believe they should step up. The ones that can't step up are the, your small businesses all over your community that are not part of larger corporations, and they have the same issue with trying to find accommodation. So I'm really pleased to hear, and I'm here because I was to raise it, and I'm glad that, you know, I'm getting some feedback, so that it's out there, that you are looking at multi types of housing. The rental end of it has become very difficult, as you know, for developers, because there are so many things in place now that support the renter. There is a reluctance on the part of a lot of building developers and owners to come to rental. And this, again, is, like I say, as long as, when you look at the bigger picture, and somebody's doing a large development, and they're involved in any way at all with the community, and that they're getting either some land or whatever it might be, that you, you know, encourage them to do a certain portion or a certain number of units at the lower end, strictly for summer rental, to be snowbird rental in the winter, not people that are there 12 months of the year, because that's, we have that, you know, people that are move in and stay and rent for all year round. It's not that. It's the five or six months over the summer. It's your little restaurants, coffee shops, it's all your stores, all of those who get, need extra people during that timeframe. They don't have a corporation behind them to help them with the accommodation. So I just, I'm glad you're looking at all of these different developments, and I just want you to make sure that that's on the table when you talk to people, even if it's a handful of units in any particular development. It will make a difference to your community, and you're very dependent on those people that come here just to work for that short space of time. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, MLA Larson. We do appreciate it. I really think that we're all trying to work together to look at this. We realize it's a concern, our OCP review, and Ms. McKay and Mr. MacArthur have arranged several specific times when people can come and give their input, and they have cards called Choose Your Soiues. You should maybe take one. You should have a look at it.
Yep.
And, and just see the types of things that we're looking at, and we, it is on our radar, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of trying to assess all the information. We also have people here, transient workers, and I say transient because they're often here for two weeks, three weeks. That's another issue that, of course, we have to deal with as well.
Yeah.
And one of the nice things that we've heard is that people say, well, there's no, you know, you don't have enough housing, you don't have enough places for people to come, young families. And we understand that the elementary school has an all-time high in terms of population, and that they're having to reshuffle class sizes and classrooms, because they have more kids than they anticipated. So we see all of those things as positive.
Yeah. That's very, very good thing for your community.
Yes.
You know, because it's always a struggle, right?
Yes.
And so the young people are the new blood, and they'll stay, and, you know, and supply people to work in your industries as well as they move forward. But yeah, that's just, like I say, the small businesses are, have always been one of my biggest concerns, and that is one of their major issues.
Yep.
So as long as it's on your radar, that's, I'm very pleased about that. Thank you for the time this morning. As soon as you get your UBCM list...
Absolutely.
Please send it to me.
We will send it to you.
As quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
And I will see you in Vancouver.
Vancouver, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Welcome, Alan.
Thank you. So the next thing that we have is our Destination Soiues Biannual Progress Report, and that would be our Executive Director, Kelly Glazer. Welcome, Kelly.
Good morning, Mayor McCordough and council. It's been a while since I've been in front of you, and so I thought it would be a good idea to maybe go through the report that you received earlier. Every six months, Destination Soiues produces a report to tell you just about, you know, what we're doing and what's been accomplished, and so I'm here to do that today. Now, I know that, sorry, I don't know what this is. I know that these reports tend to take a while, so I'm not going to slow down too much unless somebody has any questions, and please do ask them throughout my presentation. So this is just an overview of the mission/vision statement. Now, we did tweak this about a year ago in a board retreat to make it more specific to what we see ourselves as doing today, and fine tuning it. There's really not a lot. I mean, I think the focus was really that we wanted to not just be the warmest welcome, but we wanted to be a year-round destination and focus on getting ourselves there. This is the media coverage that we've accomplished to date, so this, these are all August-to-date numbers. So we hire an on-contract PR firm to make sure that we get all the media coverage we can possibly get, for all the different events and activities that are going on in Soiues. And so at this point in time, you'll notice that we've had six fam tours and 15 media hosted in Soiues. We tend not to do a lot in the summertime, for obvious reasons, and we focus on the spring and the fall, so we've got another wave of media that will be coming to enjoy fog and a number of other events that are coming, that we help to co-host and bring to the area to make sure that the world knows all about what we're doing here. Some of the marketing initiatives we've undertaken so far this year, we initiated a spring golf campaign, Wine Trails Magazine, we make sure that we get out into that piece to remind people of our area and the wineries and events that take place during those wineries or in those wineries. We're in the RV guide, and this year we also went into WestJet magazine. Just back to the RV guide, these are guides that are developed and put in every single RV that's rented in BC and Alberta. So when people pick up their RV, when they come here from other countries typically, that guide is in their RV, so that helps them find their way around and things they'd like to see and do. WestJet magazine was another one we did for the spring. We did try to get some partners in that, but we were not able to. Sometimes we get opportunities where a magazine such as WestJet, which is typically not affordable for us, will have space and they'll offer it at a deal, and so depending on what the deal is and when it is, we will jump on that. The snowbird market, we continue to market to that fairly aggressively. We've developed their own Facebook page for them to intercommunicate, and we post on there and put information and specials and whatnot. We also have gone back into the Western Producer. We did pull out for a little while, because it was terribly expensive, and we find we have so much repeat business. However, the snowbird market is changing, and we're changing with it. So there's more people to speak to as people age and are unable to travel. We're pulling up a younger snowbird. The DO landing page for snowbirds has increased, as has our Facebook page. So all of our numbers are going up. We're not seeing any alarming things happening going downwards. The Ski Baldy Stay at Soiues campaign was a digital campaign. We worked with Baldy Mountain to partner in funds to encourage people to come and ski at Baldy and stay in Soiues. You know, the draw for that mountain is very regional, but we were able to generate about 70-room nights for that, so in wintertime, that's new business that we wouldn't typically have, so we're happy with it. We'd like to see more. We're encouraged that Baldy Mountain has developed an intermountain pass with Manning Park, Apex, Seymour, and Mount Washington. And speaking to their marketing fellow, he gave me very surprising numbers on the level of interest coming from Mount Washington especially. I wondered if that was going to be one that we would actually have a good draw, but we do. So it'll be interesting to see how that program pans out for 2019, 2020. The golf campaign, we found that we weren't getting translations into bookings. Find that the golfing market tends to look online, search the heck out of your website, and then go book direct. So we did something a little different. We did an e-blast to the 10,000 people that opted into that site, and were able to send them a direct marketing message through that channel. So we also increased our own Destination of Soiues subscriptions by a significant amount as well. Our digital overview will quickly show you that, again, we are on the increase. The increases are not dramatic, but they're increases, and so we're always happy with that. We've seen a significant increase in certain areas this year. There are lots of people wondering how our summer was, and in general terms, it's been very, very strong, very good. JoJo's lineup is a very good indication. Our visitor center in August alone saw 1,000 more people than we did last August. Our numbers are tracking ahead for the year in the visitor center. You can see our year-to-date figures for social media, all on the increase. We do a regular, regularly mailed-out newsletter to individual, or to stakeholders, and then also to consumers. Our consumer's base, databases, is not as large as we'd like it to be, as we only started to collect the information a year and a half ago. But right now, we're at 2,600 subscribers, so zero to 2,600 isn't bad. We get lots of good information in there, lots of pickup. We also, with our stakeholders, share with them marketing opportunities that are coming, so that they can participate if they'd like to. We also share information about what's going on with fires and floods and different tips and things that they can do to manage their business if we do happen to have those kinds of things going on. Another market that we're investing in is called Meeting Incentive and Travel Trade. So Meeting and Incentive is marketing to large corporations that reward employees with trips, and we've been quite successful with that in this area. Travel trade is the overseas market. It's not busloads of people, it's individual people coming over to visit. What we're focusing on is the Asian, Asia-Pacific market, because they are more price-sensitive than the European markets, and also more interested in shoulder period. That is what we're trying to generate, is spring and fall, and even some winter if we can. So CanTrav is a company that we have just engaged in a relationship with, that manages all of the inquiries that come from all the many different people that think they'd like to book a meeting or a convention or something like that. And they work directly with the stakeholders on our behalf, because as you can well imagine, there are only a handful of stakeholders that can actually participate in something like that. And so although we want the business, as it definitely impacts our community, we want to make sure that we're not focusing too much of the Destination of Soiues staff time on following these leads. We also go to Canada Business Events, which is a large invitation-only business-to-business meeting, where people are able to say, you know, we're looking for a place to go. With the addition of Area 27, that's made quite a difference to this market for us. You know, all of the big car suppliers are wanting to come to this area and hold various different types of meetings or membership galas or things like that. Our visitor services, as I mentioned, is up. Not hard when you were in the little building that we were in next door. Nobody even really knew it was a visitor center, so this is larger-than-life visitor center, and we continue to see really great growth since we've moved in there. And we're actually ahead of the region in terms of the number of visitors we see. We see more visitors than Penticton, Oliver, Caramius, anybody else. So it's not hard to imagine, though, because we have the most visible and central visitor centers. So we're able to do quite a lot there and help our stakeholders, because we get lots of very specific requests about where to stay, where to eat, what to do, that type of thing. As most of you know, Destination of Soiues handed Oyster Festival over to one of our main partners for the year 2019. It was a decision by the Board of Directors of Destination of Soiues to no longer actually produce events. We support them, we guide them, we market them, but we don't produce them. They're very time-intensive and expensive, and a lot of our resources, we're going into putting on one or two events, and so we continue to look for events that want to come here, and we want to groom them, help them, market them, give them the guidance that they need, provide them sources for funding, other than Destination of Soiues. And we continue to do that and work on those types of things. You'll notice on the bottom of the page, we're working on a winter festival. I was hoping to have more information by now, but the company that we're working with are producing a large festival in Prince George coming up very quickly, and so they weren't able to provide some of the detail that I'm looking for. But suffice it to say that in 2020, we will have a winter festival event. We're looking for it to be approximately anywhere from three to five days long, and we'll incorporate a lot of the things that are already happening, and just tie it up in a nice little bow and seal it with some, some sort of a gala opening or gala closing, or perhaps both. We're also looking at an athletic event of some type to take place in December. Again, I cannot, I can't get people to answer me quite right now, but it would be December, likely, of 2020. If we can make it happen in 2019, we will, but at this point, we probably will be at 2020. And that's it for the six-month update. I wanted to let you know that our MRDT is pacing along very nicely. As you may be aware, we're two months behind in terms of what we receive.
Can I make a point on your last thing about the winter festival? We used to have one here. It was a three-day, I think we had, polar bear swim was included in it. There was, there were quite a few things. It, it needed a whole ton of volunteers, and that was why it, was it the Chamber of Commerce, CJ, that did it? Who was it?
No, it was a private.
Private, okay, but I think they had Chamber of Commerce, and there were lots of people involved in it. It somehow just didn't have enough oomph to get going for a couple of years, I think. However, good luck with that. I think it's a great idea.
The difference between maybe then and now is, is that this private company is a three-year contract.
Okay.
So we don't try it one year and go, oh gee. We keep at it. We have reasonable expectations, and the volunteer base required for the event we're working on, outside of the ones that actually already happen, is six people. And we are working more and more with Tourism Oliver to bring them into the fold, so to speak. We're not working quite as opposite of each other as has been in the past, and we recognize that there's a lot of great product in Oliver, and we have the marketing abilities, facilities. So we are working together. Case in point, we're working together on producing media coverage for Festival of the Grape this year.
Good.
So there's more volunteers in Oliver than there are in Soiues, and I think it's just a demographic thing, but we're well aware of the volunteer...
Well, I think you need to get the, the snowbirds that come.
That's what we were thinking.
They usually are quite good at volunteering.
Well, and they're looking for things to do.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
So we thought that that would be good.
Line them all up this year and tell them to come back and do it next year.
Will do.
Can I, before you start again, is, are we okay with the talking and so on outside? Is there, do you suppose, Mr. MacArthur, would you be able to go out and either ask them to either close the door or, you know, something? I think it might be a little confusing. I can hear it fine, but I'm sure some of you are having trouble. Thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just going to finish off with MRDT. We have been overforecast each month. Right now, I just have up to May in the bank. As you're aware, our MRDT funds flow through the Finance Department here at Town Hall until September 1st. And so as of September 1st, we'll be taking on that responsibility, so I might have a little knowledge a little faster, but nonetheless. The only month we saw a negative number was in January, and we were down by about $1,000. But typically, we're up averaging about $1,500 a month, so that's good. 2018 was a tough year. We were forced to make lots of decisions budget-wise at Destination of Soiues. We did not meet our targets. So we're happy that we are now going to be working with 3%. We feel that we probably are going to be in the neighborhood of, you know, we went from 430,000 in MRDT in 2017, down to 407,000 in 2018. from 430,000 in MRDT in 2017, down to 407,000 in 2018. We think we're going to finish this year at about 425,000. And we're forecasting, it's not official at this point, because I haven't cleared it with my Finance Committee, but we think our rudimentary math will tell us that 3% will get us to about 600,000. So, that allows us to do some of these things, like these winter festivals, and a few other things that we've got in mind, that we're in the process of sharing with our board members at this point in time. Any questions for me?
I had one. Anybody else? The, I noticed that the ads, I think it was probably some of the news media, I think Destination of Soyuz, were concerned about the fire north of Oliver, and what it was doing, the smoke damage for people who had compromised systems. And I was always so appreciative of looking at the Holiday Inn camera that was on every night on the news, because that showed that we were clear, there was not smoke, and I think it had a detrimental effect on the number of visitors, or people that normally came here. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah. We have access on our website typically of three different webcams. So, Holiday Inn, we have, we have the Watermark, and we also have Walnut Beach and Safari Beach. Different reasons, different technical issues, different operating systems have created some inconsistency on how many of those webcams are on our website. We started doing that last year. The damage to our visitor base was done in the last two to three years. This year, as you all know, we had one or two days of concerning smoke, and that was it. We made a point in the last two years of being out doing video every day, posting it, showing people what the actual weather was like, and what the smoke was like. Our website also has the air quality index, and it's updated constantly, as is the information from Wildfire BC. Now, this information was given to all of our stakeholders through e-newsletters, and also, we held a networking session at the visitor center in May, and we brought Destination BC here, and we talked about what you can do to mitigate problems with this type of negative media that goes out there, and how you should handle the guests, how you should handle the cancellations, if there are any, and also, to please, please keep us informed. And we've had great success with that this year. So, we call every hotel operator during the summer months for various different reasons. And, you know, when there's smoke and floods, then we're in touch a lot more often. The reports that we got back are basically that business was slower to book, so the window was shorter, two to three days, instead of our typical three weeks or three months, which is difficult for businesses, because they don't know what to put in the bank. But business wasn't lost, there was no reduction in rates. Our average rate is still very high and very healthy. So, you know, we've got some work to do. We know that we have to develop a contingency fund in Destination of Soyuz, so that we can do emergency marketing. And instead of saying, "Well, we won't do this, and we'll do that," we've done that, and we had that in place this year, and we used it this year. And the emergency marketing focus was on the lack of bookings for August, September, and October. So, that's what we're in the process of, and we've just finished an August campaign. Unfortunately, we don't have the information back from the hotels on how that worked, other than business is good, we're 92, 95% booked, and, you know, we're where we should be. So, the media has also done quite a good job at being a little bit more careful about the words they use and how they report, so that people are given the actual facts of where problems are, and where problems are not.
Good. Well, thank you. I know that you're certainly aware of it, and we were too. We just, it kind of annoyed me when I heard, "There's problems in the South Okanagan, breathing, stay inside." And you'd look out, and you'd see that it was perfectly clear here. So, I think they were including a much larger area than Soyuz, but we were suffering as well because of that. Thank you.
I'm just going to check and see if there's anyone on council who'd like to, go ahead, Councilor Bennett.
Thank you.
Ask a question.
Thank you. Kelly, just a quick question, two things. One, I think it's great to see you working with Oliver and with Ms. McKay. I think that's really important, that we, that's come back together to work as communities. But also, can you just kind of, for some of the councillors, they look at Destination of Soyuz, and they say, "What a success." Is there a word that you can say, when you look through back to last year, and you say, "It was a successful year, because we filled so many rooms," or how do you, at the end of the year, say, "It was a successful year"?
Well, we use what we call KPIs, Key Performance Indicators, and we have a number of them, in a number of areas that we spend money. And so, we look for increases on our website, we look for increases in our Facebook, we look for increased numbers in occupancy, we look for spread in that occupancy. In other words, we're pretty comfortable that we're going to fill in certain months of the year. And so, we're measuring our success by, you know, the occupancy rates going up. We participate in something we call a STAR report, which is a report that takes the information anonymously from individual hotels that opt-in to participate. All of the branded hotels in our community participate on a worldwide brand, because this is a worldwide measurement system that's used. And so, from that, Destination of Soyuz is measured by those seven properties that report their average rate and their occupancy, and that information is calculated year over year. We compare ourselves to certain communities that we call our comp set, and our Board of Directors and Marketing Committee have altered that comp set a little bit here and there, tweaked it for different reasons. But we are very unique, and so it was difficult to come up with a comp set. So, we've chosen other RMI communities, for instance. We've also chosen other very seasonally-driven communities. And then, we've chosen the communities that are close to us, Penticton, for instance, and Kelowna, just to see how we measure up and we fit in with what's going on. Challenge with these kinds of reports is it's only as good as the information that it's fed. And we have 28 hotels and seven people that are contributing to this report, so a little bit of grain of salt has to come with it. But I've been doing this for a really long time, and our guesses are not too far off based on the extrapolation of various factors that we pull in to get a gauge. But the KPIs are what we go by on paper, and what we present to our board, and to Destination BC, and the rest of our funding partners.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else?
Well, thank you very much. We always appreciate having you come and give us an update on what you're doing, and we're certainly happy that the numbers are up, and why wouldn't they be? Anybody who drove by that building would want to stop and come in, wouldn't they? So, thank you very much, and we look forward to another update, whenever you've got one ready for us.
Will do. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, and our next item on the agenda is a petition regarding the sewer smell. Is there someone who is going to speak to this? Please, yes, please get them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I got.
Could you introduce yourself first, please? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Just about to do that. My name is Sandra Hashi. I live at Pebble Beach Dry, in the golf course area, and we are here today. First of all, thank you for acknowledging our concerns in regards of the sewage treatment plant. And unfortunately, not too many people could show up, too many residents who are affected by it, because of its start of the school and working. And, yeah, just the awful smell definitely has increased the last couple of years. It makes it sometimes impossible, unbearable, to sit outside on a summer evening, have dinner. We can't leave our windows open in the night, because the smell is so intense. And, yeah, we are just fed up, and we just want to know if the town has something planned. Is there anything, is there, yeah, any plans to resolve the problem? Or, I'm sure we get phone calls, I know we get phone calls all the time.
Well, thank you, and I assume that many of the people behind you are here for the same reason that you are.
I don't know all of them.
So, we absolutely do understand what the concerns are. We hear about it often. We certainly have got your petition with many people's names on it. We used to get updates often, because the retired CAO lives up there, and he certainly understands what the issues are, and was part of the concern, I'm sure, that all of you have.
Yes.
I'm going to ask Mr. Brownstein to come up and sit at the table. This is our Operations Director, and I think that if you had some questions about it, that he might be able to fill you in on, there's a little button on the side, Jared, that you have to press.
So, why does it not have a button? Just tap it and see if it's on.
Oh, it's on. Okay. So, I'm going to let Mr. Brownstein talk about this a little bit, because certainly it consumes his every minute, I think of every day, because he really is as concerned about it as are all of us. We certainly don't want this to happen. So, could you comment on?
Can I just have one?
Oh, absolutely.
Can I throw out one thing? It's ACTISIM, the town look into using ACTISIM, like other communities?
Yes, I am actually having a conversation with them next week.
Okay.
In regards to the potential additives that we can add to our system to improve it. What you'll find sometimes with those types of additives, they're hit and miss. Unless we go into a full chemical analysis of our wastewater system, it may not effectively address the odor issue. It may, I don't know until we actually go through the process. Yes, but we are going to give it a whirl. There are other underlying factors in regards to our wastewater system that contribute to the smell. Our system is designed for 20,000 people. We normally only have 5,000 people servicing it. So, what happens is, in the summer, the loads go through the roof, and that causes additional flow in the system. And unfortunately, our system's not designed to keep up with it instantaneously. It takes time for the bacteriological aspects to kick in.
Yeah.
And then, by the end of summer, the system's now settled back down, and smells start dissipate. So, I know it's during that two-month window, and all you folks want to be outside dealing with the beautiful weather. There are other problems with our system. We have what's known as low-flow stations, so a lot of our stations see little to no flow all year round. So, what happens is, the station at the far end might turn over once every three weeks. Then it pumps into the next station, it might turn over once every two weeks, then it pumps into the next station, that one might turn over once a week. By the time the sewer gets all the way down here, that's what's known as going septic. So, it's extra rank, extra smelly. It sits, it goes, pumps into our main lift, heads up to the lagoons, and as soon as it hits the pumping system, it goes aerated. So, it releases that smell even more.
But just one question. How come it increased the smell? We always had the problem, but why did it increase?
Honestly, I don't have an answer for that. I don't know enough of the history to provide you with that background. I know, talking to the previous CAO, you know, this is, it kind of ebbs and flows. Some years, you guys get really bad smell, other years, it's not so bad. So, without going back and actually looking at the past, you know, 15, 20 years of wastewater history, I can't answer that question, and I have not had the opportunity to do that yet.
Of course, I think there's somebody else. I just did the opening words. There we go.
Hi, I'm Christine Klein, dear worship and council members. I'm not here to criticize, I'm just here to encourage us to take part in the meeting that's happening in Kelowna on the 6th. It's the Okanagan Basin Water Board Annual Meeting, and their theme this year is "One Valley, One Water." It's on Costin Avenue, and the last day to register is the 3rd, which is today, to get our members, like, this would be excellent. Do you know about that meeting? Yes. Are you going?
Not this year, unfortunately.
It is critical that we have.
Christine, I am the Chair of that committee, and I will be there. I will be hosting the meeting, so.
Wonderful, wonderful. Because they are offering, I think they call it the, the right glasses on here, grants. They offer a grant of up to 18% for redevelopment of the sewage treatment plants in smaller communities. I mean, where the tax base isn't quite large enough to contain, you know, this kind of development. But they have, between Vernon and Kelowna and Penticton, developed sewage treatment facilities that produce almost clean water. And they take the settlement from this, and that packs, they call it cake, and they mix it with wood chips and a chemical, and produce soil, usable, growable soil. And the water that flows into the lakes is clean enough that it has no nitrates, but it feeds the little beings in there, and creates fish food and food for other little animals and water creatures. So, I'm hoping that we will have a strong contingency there, or have the ability to promote a Soyuz, and see if we can't get part of these grants.
The grants are only given out once a year, so you apply for them, and I'm not, we normally do apply for grants with the Okanagan Basin Water Board. We have had several over the years, and I'm not sure who's, yeah, I don't quite remember all of them, but definitely, water and water treatment and water twinning are very high on our list in Soyuz. And definitely, you're right, it's one water, one valley, one water, and we try and look at all of the issues that affect everybody. So, I'm sure we will continue to apply for every grant available. As a matter of fact, we've applied for sewage treatment grants, water twinning, which fortunately, we got a grant for that the other day. So, we're very happy whenever we, whenever something like that comes forward, because, believe me, we apply for everything. But the, just as an aside, I was a teacher here for many years, and I used to take my class in a bus up to the sewage lagoons. And I found the letter that I had written to the Soyuz Times, I think it was about 20 years ago. And we would go up there on a bus, and we'd have somebody from Public Works would, that looked after the sewage lagoons, would take us through and explain what was being done and how it was done. When they go into the different ponds, the water, the sewage, at the last pond, it is clean enough that all the ducks were swimming in it. So, it was interesting that Tim Hebert, who was, he was the father of one of the kids in my class, he was taking us on a tour, and he said to the kids on the bus, "Did you all bring your bathing suits?" And they were all horrified. But, you know, it was in the last pond, it was clean enough that ducks were there. So, I think that's a bit of a different issue than the smell that comes from spraying the effluent. Am I correct, Mr. Brownstein?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Yeah. So, there's a whole ton of issues here that affect it. I'm horrified at what has happened this summer, because I think it's been worse up there than, certainly than last year. And it takes, I think, when there's a little bit of a breeze or wind, it sends it down towards the border, or wherever it sends it to, and that helps. I understand during the golf tournament that was on, the mid-amateur and seniors, oh, because I heard, and I was up there, that it wasn't as bad. So, I don't know whether that was the wind or what it was. However, believe me, it However, believe me, it consumes all of us on a daily basis at Town Hall. If there was a magic wand that we could wave, we would have done it. So I think we need to make sure that Mr. Brownstein and Mr. Chabot have a look at all of the issues that are, that are current and see if there isn't something that we can, that we've maybe missed or something different than we can do. But we understand. And I know it's not just people at the golf course, it's people sort of down sixty-second because I have a bunch of friends that live down there and I hear from them too.
I just, I would like to see a very strong contingency towards gathering this, these grants for us and see how much we can propose some sort of maybe better development of the ponds or the way we're spraying it or just better development up there and put a figure on it and go for it with these grants.
Well, we certainly are looking at everything. So please understand that we, we feel terrible. I know one of my friends said I used to leave my windows open at night. Now I don't, I close the window and leave my air conditioner on. And so I totally, I totally.
We all understand that. It's just going forward that I'm concerned about. And that's what I'm just saying, I want to see us go forward as quickly as possible because this is a tourist town. And I think in my estimation that when we have fifteen thousand people through this town in the summertime, something has to give.
Absolutely.
And that's what we have to look, you know, forward to.
So, believe me, we are looking at it. We're trying to look at every option. We've had the true engineering down, looking at how we can, if there's something that can be done up there. And I'm sorry that it's not an easy fix, but we will continue to work on this.
One step at a time, but we just have to take those steps.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's only one other concern that I have and that is high-density building that we're proposing in areas where we have kettles. And every bit of water counts and those little kettles are filtering systems. Now, it maybe not have nothing to do with the sewage water coming down or the finished product, but it has to do with the amount that we're constantly putting in there. And I really think we have to consider maintaining these kettles because they are filtering systems. And I am referring to the development that is proposed for Eighty-Ninth Street and between Eighty-Ninth and Ninety-seventh Street on that little kettle over by, I think it's Sonora, Sonora Gardens, Sonora.
Oh, okay.
That bothers me that if, you know, that's going to be high-density in there and we won't have that kettle if that happens. So those are just my concerns and it.
Right.
It ties in with the fact that we're going to be pumping more sewage up there.
So, just so that you know, and I'm sure you all do, that we are doing a, what's it, CO, OCP, COP, I was going to say. The OCP, Official Community Plan. We will have plenty of opportunity for people in the community to come out, fill in a form, talk to Ms. McKay or Mr. MacArthur. And there are events that are on that you would be certainly welcome to attend. And please, we want everybody's input because this is a document for the next ten years and we need to look at housing, we need to look at water and we need to look at best use of the facilities that we have here. And climate change and, you know, lots of other things affect it as well. Ms. McKay, did you want to speak?
I did. Mayor McCordoff.
Oh, please.
I never pass up an opportunity to plug the OCP. The survey's live. Please go onto our website at assous.ca and click on Choose Your Sous and take out, fill out the survey and that's your first opportunity. And then, of course, next Thursday evening, we will be having our kickoff event. And so you'll have to register for that event. There's a cost to it, it's just we want to know how many people to set up for because there will be some beverages and some food there. So that's next Thursday as well, on September 12th. So please go to Choose Your Sous and register for that.
Thank you, Mayor McCordoff. And that will be at the Sonora Center. Am I correct? Yeah, okay.
Thank you for having me.
Please, we appreciate you giving us this petition and we certainly understand the concerns. And I can promise you that we will try our best to solve this problem because I get it, we hear from you all the time. So, thank you very much for coming and we certainly have the petition which has been presented. Is there someone else who, would you come up to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for taking, taking my, the opportunity for letting me here, speak to you today. The, one of the things that we're all, that a number of people have been talking about here is, is how we can correct the ponds, the residency time, reduce the older generation. But nobody has talked about the fix that we can possibly do to the hotels and the residents within the community of Soius by incorporating bylaws that mandate low-flow toilets and low-flow heads so that the overall load that's going up to the pond is reduced substantially. Now, I've spent some time in those hotels here and a majority of them have toilets that are forty years old that consume a lot of water per flush. And in the bylaws, even in Bridge Columbia's bylaws for building, on both commercial and residential basis, it mandates a lower-flow toilet. And, you know, there are other communities within B.C. and Alberta that have already moved forward with bylaws mandating this. And it's something that could have been done years ago here because this type of equipment has been around for a long time. You say we have fifteen thousand beds, well, we may have ten thousand toilets that are all flushing two or three gallons with each flush where, you know, it's way in excess. And, you know, the opportunity to put in a bylaw would save the taxpayers of this community a lot of money on the sewage treatment. And it's something that should be mandated towards, by this council so that we can look after the taxpayers and not just the commercial hotel operators. Earlier, just before this talk, we had an opportunity to hear that Destination of Soius is very happy with the load on the hotels. And while the load on the hotels ends up in the sewage ponds, so we should work in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. You didn't tell me what your name was.
It's Gary Ford.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm, I do think that Ms. McKay and Mr. Brownstein, that we do mandate with new buildings, there are, there's quite a few things that are required when a new building is put in. When there are updates, they are required to have low-flow toilets. And am I correct that that's on? Yes, that's, and when you come and ask for, you're going to redo your house or your building or build a new hotel, there are definitely rules that have to be followed. And we're right on it. That we can't go into the old ones and say you have to change your toilet. But there are lots of people that whenever they do upgrades are mandated to change it, to fit in with our new thing. So we do have some bylaws that address that for sure. Okay, well, I believe that's the, the end of our, of our meeting. I don't see anything else on our agenda. So I would like to thank you all for coming and we certainly have your petition here. And could I have a motion, please, to adjourn the meeting? Thank you. Counselor King, Counselor Rhodes, all in favor. Thank you, everyone.